Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet TV and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50% to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Hello, everyone. Welcome you to this January 11th meeting of our school board. This is our first school board meeting of the new year, so glad to see everybody back. Thank you for being here. We will have the roll call. Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mrs. McLeod.
Here.
Mrs. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Sumners.
Here.
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
And I am present. If you'll rise with me for a moment of silence, prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Bow our heads. Father, we walk into this day humbly, and we thank you for our presence in it. Please give us your direction. We love you, we praise you, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, the approval of the December 7th, 2023 minutes. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next up, we have a recognition of employees. Always nice to have Patrick Gilbert from First National Bank here with some monies and token appreciation to those employees of the school system who've stood out a little bit last month or this last month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Beard, it's an honor to be here, and it's also an honor to be able to recognize the folks that give so much to this community and to our children. First, we'd like to recognize Mr. Wade Brown in Transportation with a $100 gift card.
They had a family emergency. He was planning on coming. I think they're at the ER, so I'll make sure he gets it.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Shelby Hargrove from Pulaski Elementary. And for Richland, Ms. Shannon Chatter. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Again, I'd like to thank First National Bank, Mr. Patrick Gilbert for always making these meetings better, making them better for our teachers and staff who obviously enlighten our students endeavors here in our school system. Thank you. Next, we have recognition of students. It's Carson Phillips here. We have art on stat on the walls tonight. As we do this every month, we run a new round. And if you'd just like to step forward, Ms. Phillips, and just give us an idea of what we're looking at, I know we're looking at beautiful and, you know, very talented pieces. We've had a lot of students here tonight to represent these pieces and got a picture. And so, take the floor, please.
So yes, since this is the beginning of the new semester, this is how we finished out last semester. We have a very different wide varieties of drawings, paintings. As you can see, there's a lot of fantastical elements. There's a lot of realism as well. We dabbled in some oil paintings, and of course, we also dabbled in some sculpture, paper mache. There's also tiny books over here. They are more than welcome to be read, so you can lift them up, you can read them. And yes, I feel like we had a strong finish from last semester, and I'm extremely proud of each and every student, if they're here or not. So, thank you very much.
This is beautiful. Where will this go after this? Will it remain on display at the school?
So, yes, usually we do try to keep everything displayed either in the library or if there's any other teachers who do want to display them in their classroom, usually we do keep it in the library. And then this will all also be displayed in our spring show on May 13th. So, yes.
Awesome. Beautiful.
Thank you so much.
Just like I say, you know, great work to the students, and thank you for having these pieces put here, and it really brightens up the room. It's awesome.
It's the largest display we've had. It's impressive. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. That makes me feel so nice. And I'm happy that I can display all of their wonderful artwork as well. I'm very proud of my students.
Thank you for leading them in this capacity. Thank you. It's cool to see these walls change, and it's pretty neat. I'm glad that we... All right, under new business, we have the Bridgeforth Middle School, gross maximum price, the GMP, and a funding resolution request that we've been working on, a draft. And we will treat this, other than taking any kind of outside influence, if we need it, we can suspend the rule and ask for it. But I would like to, with this being such a fast pace and us getting kind of down to some of the nitty-gritty, we'd like us to treat this a little bit more like a work session within this board, so we can discuss this clearly. The goal in this and the county executive and members of the commission who've been trying to help with budget committee and school committee, the goal in moving forward with this would be, take what we decide here and then discuss that further in a budget and school committee meeting in the morning, and then take that to task with the full county court on Tuesday. And of course, all that is barring we don't get blown away or iced in. Weather looks pretty crazy, but we're going to push forward as best we can and see where this lands. As we talk about the GMP for Bridgeforth Middle School, we've seen this for a month or a little bit more than a month now. We received this on November 9th, I'm sorry. And that amount came in to $8,622,933. And that's the figure that we've been looking at. What we've been tasked with and looking at is how do we finance? And when I say "we" in that respect, that is us and the county commission and legislative body. As we've talked through this, talked with finance, talked with, like I said, the county executive, we've talked about working that in the form of a bond. But before we get to that talk, we want to make sure we break this up, and let's talk about, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, let's talk about the GMP as it sits, which it has been reviewed by Wold HFR to make sure it is a correct document, the pricing is good, and it has their stamp of approval, or we would not have this right now. It was also since the finance for that same, you know, preliminary checkoff, and we have done that. So we're now left with, and as we've discussed, is that this is the amount, and it would be the due diligence of the board for us to either approve to move forward with this amount and not, especially as close as we are to looking at financing options. One other aspect of this is not just the amount, this also comes with scheduling concerns, which is why we have been pushing through this over the last two months and through the holidays. This contract does have a commitment date of February 1st. Again, this is a review of stuff we've already talked about, but I want to treat it this way as such. With that start time, that is what gets us in the position to start ordering equipment, let the subs know that their bids have been fully awarded, not only accepted, but now awarded, and we begin the fully scheduled process and costing to get materials in here and start on Bridgeforth this summer. That with the intent and following the same similar schedules we have with Giles County High School, you start that first summer. You do have a full school calendar year that involves some construction. I think wonders have been worked at Giles County High School in managing that, many of us have seen. Great help from our principal there, as I'm sure we will get from Mrs. Hurd at Bridgeforth as well. Students go home in that second spring, and the work commences and finishes up that second summer. So you're really talking about one school calendar year, even though it goes from one fiscal year to the next. So the scheduling, the strategy with Bridgeforth was exemplified in Giles County High School as we see, and we always say, hope to stay on track and finish it up this fall. So we're kind of mirroring that. We're also looking at the overlap of two months of summer work at the high school as we start two months of summer work at Bridgeforth. That is why this GMP is what it is, that helps secure our subs and our contractors, helps us continue that workflow from one campus to the other, and helps us stay on some kind of deadline or schedule to where we can get these schools reinvigorated, if you will, in the correct amount of time. So all of that is part of this GMP. If I left anything out, Dr. Beard, in just this little elevator speech? Any questions as you guys have looked over at this GMP over the last?
Has the bonds payments changed at all, any?
When we look at a bond that would service 8.7 million, it has from when we just did that standard 2 million that we looked at, the rate is still 5.39%, but instead of servicing a bond that was starting off at 1.8 million the first year, we're now kind of looking at a 1.147, 1.148 servicing note. In that first year, that's 235,000 in interest and 913,000 in principal. By year five, that really switches from more going to the principal. And also with year five on the current bond that we would be looking at on this, we can renegotiate that bond at that time if rates have dropped. Another key thing about the bond is that we only pay interest on what we draw off of the bond in that first three years. Of course, we know that the job, or we hope that that job will be done in two years, but it's not that we're paying quite the amount of interest on this debt schedule right off the bat, because we will not be drawing on that full 8.7 million right away. That's a good question, because I think this will come up later as we start talking about the resolution side of this and what we're faced with. And the total cost of this over that 10-year period is 2.78 million, so that's your cost for debt servicing, for, you know, getting the bond, issuing the bond and whatnot. So, yeah, that's 2.78 million dollars in interest, if you will. But we have a chance to lower that if we see bond rates go down at that five-year mark.
But the cash flow of this, we run the risk of materials fluctuating, labor fluctuating, and all that also, though?
We do. I think just right off the top of the head, and I asked this question, you know, to someone who would have an answer to it, in that 2.78 million dollar cost versus trying to save this and save the cash flow in time and work off the dollars that we do have in reserves or the dollars that we expect to continue to add to our reserves through over collection, then you can do the math. If it's 8 million dollars and we roughly overcollect 2 million dollars, then that's a four-year project. You're going to see a lot of money lost and a lot of issues if you go that route. One thing that you do, that go in that route, would be that we would lose this current GMP price, and you'd see that go up steadily.
And with the overcollection of this, once we get this paid for, we're going to put our eyes on Pulaski Elementary, correct?
Correct.
Because, you know, I just feel like they're getting left out, but our hands are tied with the needs that Bridgeforth needs.
I would agree on the left-out scenario of saying that there are, if you, after Bridgeforth, you've got, what, six other schools? Now, what you're talking about is the initial three-school project that we agreed on, and again, when I say "we," us and the county commission, and that our original, you know, tackling or approach to doing this is. But as we've seen, as we've finished up Giles County High, and now we see what the GMP for Bridgeforth is, and we know the capital expenses and infrastructure challenges across all the county, we're having to understand this and try to figure out the best in funding The short of that, in my mind, is being, again, this is speculation, but I think we all speculate when we build a house, or we take on a new job, or we do anything, it's that we continue to collect the three-year average of 2.3 million dollars a year. If that's the case, and we see that average again this year, which I've seen in a strong economy, you know, we can expect to have 2.3 plus the four that we have in fund balance now on July 1st, we'd have 6.3 million dollars. Our first payment on this note would then be an interest payment in August for 235,000, and then a principal payment in September of '25 for 900,000. And then we're halfway around to looking at our overcollection as well. These questions are kind of part of the resolution portion of this as well. So in the resolution that we, that was originally drafted, that Mr. Stowe has helped us out with, is where that we recognize these needs. We're asking to service, asking permission to service a bond for no more than 8.7. We did 8.7 just to give that little bit of leeway, but we're going to, you know, we're going to get the bond that we need. But to service the bond no more than 8.7 million dollars over that 10-year period, and we're asking for the county to take on that debt, but letting us service it, which means they continue to let us, and that's what the resolution says as well, continue to let us take those overcollections that we have been taking. That money rolls into our fund balance, and through those overcollections, you know, 141 then helps with debt services, and we maintain the servicing of this debt over those 10 years.
The resolution, is it just for the term for us to accept the overcollection? Is it just for the term of this note, or is that something other that we might could look at after we get this paid, keep putting the overcollections in a fund to start on Pulaski Elementary, or go towards another bond in the future or something?
Well, if we're overcollecting and we're overcollecting the funds for the 10 years to fulfill this note, then yes, I would say we would need to consider talking, or us as a board, we could either try to pay this note off early, after three years, you can put more to principal and pay it off early, or we could say, we're going to continue letting this bond help us cash flow, which I keep hearing other folks say, that the bond help us continue to cash flow, and we could put that money aside ourselves. You know, if the three-year average has been 2.3 million, I just saw a Social Security Administration letter the other day, and they're raising social security rates 3.2%, Mr. Sutton.
(Inaudible).
And so, that tells us already that, you know, our government and our economy recognize that, you know, 3.2% is our inflation rate next year. Well, if you just stop there and you compound that every year, you kind of get an idea of where the economy's headed.
On the bright side, in December, Fed was talking about dropping the rates three times in 2024, and I got a report the other day that it could drop six, so I saw.
So, playing devil's advocate, that would be where someone might say, whoa, why are we going to get a bond at 5.39 when it could be lower than that? But, you know, where did the bond rise from, or where did our bond rates rise from, with Mr. Gilbert still here?
Then while you're waiting, the supplies are going to increase.
Everything increases.
And then you lose that window, you know, too. You're looking at remobilization charges and all kinds of things with that, too.
Not after three years, no. And again, we have reached out, we've tried to find other quotes on bond rates, 5.3. None is the best that we've been able to see or find, and with the bond company that does this, it's Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. Just in all transparency, we were proposed with a different-looking scenario today, and this is from a 30,000 view foot, and I've kind of thought about it or mentioned it as we've talked, you know, in this county, we do have a lot of capital projects, a lot of outline capital projects, a lot of need, and that's, I don't think anybody would argue that that's from a lack of planning or a lack of foresight or just a lack of action. Maybe that's the better way to put it. We utilize these properties, these facilities, no matter whether it's the courthouse or a school system, whatever it is, and they take on where and they need care, and we are just at that dire position. But with that understanding, there's been these questions, I keep hearing it, so you hear me say, us cash flow it by us servicing the bond through our overcollection. There's been this idea of a cash flow of where we just cash flow it when we overcollect. So if that's the case, and we're at a 4 million dollar fund balance, and we won't let ourselves go below 3 million, then we have 1 million right now to work with. 1 million right now, if we said, hey, we're just going to pull this part out of the GMP and use it, would get us maybe storefront windows at Bridgeforth Middle School. But then saying that we're only going to do that, that's going to negate the rest of the GMP, so all the values and the cost is really gone. So it's never going to be cheaper than 8.6, 8.7 million dollars. We'd probably lose our subs. We just start backing up and punting again, and as we know that in '21, we had to back up and punt, and now the cost is exorbitant, you know? And again, we've heard this over and over again, and I just said it and reminded myself, the cheapest price you're going to pay is the price you're going to pay today, because it's only going to go up. And that's even if bonds dramatically just drop back to where they, you know, were back when money was cheap four or five years ago. But if it takes four or five years to acclimate with this bond, we can renegotiate that rate. Trying to cash flow this, after year one, where we have a million to work with, and then we overcollect and have a little bit more to work with, again, I alluded to it, you've taken an 8 million dollar project now, instead of two years, one school calendar year, now you're at two or three school calendar years for the total amount of the time being done. And, you know, I don't, I think us as a school board, or I know I would, I would not want a school to be under construction for that long. At that point, I'm saying, we're trying to make the school healthy and the air quality better and all that, but yet we're going to say, we're going to take you through three years of construction to get there. So now, we're canceling one thing out for the other, I do believe. And I would imagine if I asked our current principal if he could, you know, do this for three more years, he'd say, yeah. But what if I asked, would you want to? He would say, no. When you get kind of met with, well, why can't you just cash flow it? And I immediately talked with Brian today and Brynlee, and said, what if we broke this GMP into two parts, and we tried to secure the funding as we work through the financing, because financing could take us a little bit longer than getting to February 1st? You know, what could that look like? What could we break out of this that we need to commit to now to stay on schedule? And that figures roughly, excuse me, 3 million. So then there's the scenario of saying, let's use our existing fund balance to show and to earmark the money for part one of the GMP, but keeping the entire GMP live. And we've said, we're not going to let our fund balance go below 3 million, although 1 million is acceptable by the state based on our budget, but we've said we're going to stay at 3 million. So even that scenario is not a good scenario based on how we've said we want to be fiscally responsible for our school district.
So you're saying over collections roughly 2.1 million, oh, no.
It's been 2.3 the last three years. I think it was 1.6 then, 2.6 and then 2.5. So I will say, there was 100,000 less in '22 than there was in '21. Is that right now back up enough? But three-year average is 2.3.
So technically, you're taking a 10-year bond, there's possibility to have it paid off in five?
It could be, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So then that circles us back around to running on a shoestring budget and keeping that 1 million over in our fund balance. And we say, well, how can we do that when we spent 1.1 million from our fund balance this year? Well, we took on some very big costs this year, but there were costs that had to be done for student safety. That's buses, that's the lighting at Richland. Of course, that hasn't been completed yet, because we keep seeing we have our engineering responsibilities that keep taking place in all these cases, and the roof, we're still working through all that to get the roof done. So we took on a big chunk this year. It's not to say we won't have those, but this year was a little bit different.
But if you nickel and dime, you could have it paid off in five, but you need that flexibility. I mean, you could be comfortable, say you're going to get it paid in seven versus 10.
Yes, sir.
It'd give you a little flexibility with your remaining overcollections.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I think- And I think the bond gives us a little bit, a better option of how we budget and how we cash flow and, and how we plan, plan these dollars out. But to say that we need to cash flow it with waiting on money to collect, then we're continuing exactly what we're doing. And if we're taking four-plus years to do a project that should only take two years, then what hap, then, then it's four-plus years before you start Plaski Elementary. Well, then it's two-plus years before you start, who's next? Maybe Richland Elementary, I think all of their HVAC needs to be replaced, then it's, see what I'm saying, there is a severe domino effect. I mean, action needs to be taken. We're here in this position because action has not been taken. I'm with you, I hear speculation may be out there, but, you know, I'd probably sit in the corner if I was scared and speculated about the sky falling all the time. You know, when we first looked at the bond on a 10, on a $10 million note and we saw that first payment of 1.8 being in that first year, that, that felt, that felt heavy. It really did, but, you know, 1.148 is, is a lot more doable. We do have costs coming up, we are, we are concerned about, you know, the upcoming budget, we are losing some extra funding, you never know where TISA is going to hit, which, you know, we, we're always that way every year, but, you know.
We've got concerns about the, the base pay of the teachers, you know?
Well, and we've got to always keep striving for that one because we've got to be at 50,000 in two years for a year zero teacher.
And I don't want to wait two years.
Right, you can't put that off.
Like make baby steps moving forward.
Yeah, I go back to that Social Security 3.2 percent, I mean, if we don't, if we don't match cost of living for our teachers, this is, this is another topic, but if we don't, if we don't match that, then that's where we'll be, that's exactly where we'll be, Mr. Sumners, is we'll be at that year where the govern, the state of Tennessee says, your, your zero teachers have to be at $50,000, which you know what that, you can only imagine what that does to the rest of your teachers and how their pay has to change, we have to prepare for that as well. But, but only doing one thing at a time just also puts us back to back to back behind, behind, behind the eight ball. Any questions about just the basics of, of both what we're talking about, how this GMP sits, how it works? We, we've all agreed in the past that we thought the number was an acceptable number and we know that, we just want to confirm that tonight. And in confirming that, then see if we accept the resolution as it's been drafted, where we are asking for permission to service this bond ourselves through over collection.
Yeah, I don't want to lose our over collection. Because that's a school bus. I mean, really, truthfully, that's a, that's a school bus and we, you know, we just bought six of them, but next year's coming around, we're going to need more, you know, it's always, always going out of date, always need more of them. So if we can hang on to our over collection and do these projects, I think that's what we need to do.
Well, one thing in acknowledging that in the resolution, it does mean that we continue in our over collection, which helps us service not only this debt, but those other capital projects that you're talking about and helps us keep a fund balance that we can, that we can lean on.
I feel better about the over collections because before this resolution was presented, it's not guaranteed, correct?
That's, that's correct.
And that's why I kind of brought it up in the previous meeting, you know, but if it's resolution now passed, then, you know, I feel more comfortable about moving forward.
If you'd like to make a motion on accepting the GMP, I think that would be the first thing, just so we, we do that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the GMP for Bridgeforth.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. The resolution that you got over the break and that we saw, and I'm, I'm going to read this just for transparency and so it's out there, I know you guys have seen it, but I'll do it, so it's on there. And again, this is a draft resolution, this is for us to say, we would like to let the Budget Committee and the school committees work through this draft resolution, but as it stands, we, we accept it, or we can make changes to it at this time as well. The resolution of Jaws County Commission to support the Bridgeforth Middle School renovation project, whereas the Jaws County School Board is pursuing an 8.7, $8.7 million GMP contract to renovate Bridgeforth Middle School and whereas the Board affirms the structural integrity of BMS and unanimously recommends this school's modernization is a prudent, long-term capital investment, and whereas the Board affirms that they will service the debt with anticipated school revenues through over collection beyond maintenance of effort for a bond not to exceed 8.7 million with a 10-year debt repayment schedule, and whereas the Commission has been allowing the Board to over collect beyond the county's required maintenance of effort, which has routinely yielded approximately $2.3 million annually, and whereas the Board, the Board's existing fund balance is approximately 4 million with a recommendation that the Board's fund balance not go below 3 million, whereas the Board advises there will be other school renovation projects requiring attention in the near future, whereas the School Board and Commission concur that substantial investments are necessary to maintain our educational infrastructure. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Jaws County Commission, Section 1, the Commission concurs that BMS renovation projects should move forward expeditiously in accordance with the School Board's plan to pursue a bond not to exceed 8.7 million and service the debt with anticipated school revenues through over collection beyond maintenance of effort. Section 2, that the Commission will sustain the existing over collection beyond the maintenance of effort. Section 3, that the Board shall sustain a minimum fund balance of 3 million, and Section 4, that the Commission supports this effort and for the course of the Board's debt repayment, guaranteeing their financial position if unanticipated capital demands jeopardize the minimum fund balance. Section 5, that all orders and resolutions in conflict therein would be, conflict therein be and the same are hereby repealed and this resolution is to take immediate effect upon its passage. Again, this is a draft resolution, this is just the language of how the Commission would agree to take on the debt and allow us to service it. And that is something that Dr. Beard, myself, and Mr. Stowe have worked on. As we've taken bits and pieces from our discussions up until this point.
Make a motion that we move forward with the resolution as a funding option for the Bridgeforth Middle School project.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and segmented to accept this draft resolution in efforts to move forward with funding Bridgeforth Middle School renovations. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you all. Again, that School Committee, Budget Committee meeting is slated for 10 a.m. tomorrow morning. If you guys can make it.
Basement of the Anx.
Basement of the SunTrust Annex or Ultrust Building or just the Annex now, right? It's ours.
They got a generator, so you'll be good there.
Okay.
Just want to put that out there.
All right.
You come home to flashlight. We'll call you.
And then 9 a.m. on Tuesday will be the full county court meeting. Does courthouse have a generator?
No, it's going to be outside.
It's going to be outside.
That weather going quick.
I think they were some side eye over there, right here, like, excuse me. My chair don't wheel out there.
Well, I hope they have the weather forecast wrong.
I'm afraid not, though.
All right, moving along, fellas, thank y'all for being here, if you want to go, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
See you guys in the morning. Next, under new business, the field trip request, we have a Jaws County High School Boys Soccer Tournament request, again, these overnight field trips require Board approval, all documents were submitted, volunteers qualify. Motion to approve. Motion made and segmented, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Field trip request, Richland High School Boys Soccer Camp Retreat coming up in February, this is an overnight field trip, trying to help these guys out by putting on the agenda tonight, so they got time to plan.
Second.
Motion made and segmented, any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Item D, ISM Grant, this is the Innovative Schools Models Grant, just needs our approval because it exceeded 50,000 in, in expense. Engineering architect firm was involved because mechanical and electrical and these are, if you remember, Mr. Hammond explained this to us at the work session, these are for projects for Bridgeforth, Richland High School, FFA, CTE, and Jaws County High School Greenhouse.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made and segmented, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Next item on the 2023 audit, we did talk about this as well in the work session, just as a review, there were some sales and use tax discrepancies, some overage on how copiers and bearers and license bills and licenses go between fiscal years, no huge slaps on the wrist, Dr. Beard?
No, sir. And I have already contacted R.J. Young about the overage being sent to us too late and we do have bookkeeper training on the 16th, provided, we're not snowing somewhere, so we can reschedule that fairly easily, but we do have bookkeeper training scheduled and that's from the comptroller's office, so we hope to have revisions in the findings for sure.
Scooter will be on in, each other swing by and pick everybody up in the bucket truck.
And you have all the copies of everything tonight, so you can read the reports, in the very back of the bound little book, the findings, what was repeated or fixed and those kinds of things. And Ms. Barnes did say that our audit is looking better every year, there's been improvements, so. I will also say they were late submitting it, so we did get a letter from the comptroller, but that's not on us, that's on the S. office. They're supposed to be submitted by December 31st, but because our board meeting was tonight, they have to have approval documented that y'all accepted the audit as it is, and so that will get submitted just as soon as possible, so, provided you do approve it. And it will need to be documented in minutes, there will need to be a motion.
We have that motion.
We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the 2023 audit, or second? Motion made and segmented, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Budget amendment, transportation. Did I skip it? I sure did. Richland Elementary copier contracts, Ms. Jose, Ms. Jose. It's renewal time for this, it's a five-year contract, as you guys know, all leases require our Board approval because they go beyond fiscal years, and because it goes beyond a fiscal year, this also has to be approved by the funding body, so this, this goes before the full commission as well. It's a five-year agreement, they're up for renewal.
Second.
Motion made and segmented, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, my back on track. Budget amendment for transportation, we received the insurance claim for the roof damage from that storm, when was that, last?
July.
Was it July?
Yes, sir.
It was $19,000. That money gets moved when it comes in like that, gets moved to basically revenue line item, and we're wanting to move that to the Transportation 499 or other supplies and materials, and that way that, that money can be utilized.
Mr. Hammond has a CTE, I want to amend that.
Okay, have I missed over that? If we don't, it's not only due to...
Need to make a motion to...
All right, well, let's get this one done and then go. So we do need a motion to approve moving money across those line items, the insurance money from, basically from revenues into supplies and materials, so the Transportation Department can use it.
So move.
Second. Made and segmented, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Budget amendment, food services.
That needs to, that's going to be moved to February.
That was moved to February because the money has not been allocated.
You have the letter in your packet where we were awarded it for the school supply chain, but that actually hasn't been sent to us yet, so Finance advised us to postpone that until February, so, we'd already made the budget, the, the agenda public, so didn't take it on. It'll be discussed at the work session next week.
Just since this is on the agenda, take a motion of what, no action at this time, or move it forward and then that way it's, it's clear and we can move it forward.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made and segmented, that we're taking no action on this tonight, but expect, expect it at the work session. Motion made and seconded that we're taking no action on this tonight, but expect, expect it at the work session. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you. County, back up on this. Could we entertain a motion to add a CTE Budget Amendment, and then that way we get it captured with this entire Budget Amendment? This is a new item. Mr. Hammond?
Make a motion. Second.
Alright, Dr. Beard, could you explain this agenda item?
Mr. Hammond is back there. I'll let him.
Okay.
We just, we're just moving money within our general budgets, already allocated for CTSO travel, this green acknowledgement of people. That forty-two hundred dollars is gonna be moved to the other, like you said, contributions foundation, but that's actually the TBA grants, three TBA grant students receive. They're cutting checks to the district and send to the direct schools. The finances happen to cut a check from those teams or just those lives.
Any questions on that from Mr. Hammond? Okay, we added that to GMP, and now we need to act on it, entertain a motion to approve this Budget Amendment and moving those funds.
So, move.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Good, thank you. Got no new old business. Uh, under policies for a first reading, Policy one point one oh five, School Board Legislative Involvement. Uh, again, as we discussed back in December, this is a TSBA model policy, and this gets the correct terminology in here as Legislative Liaison. Ms. Mary, Ms. Mary McLeod. Entertain a motion to approve this, as we've discussed at the work session, and now it's on the agenda.
So, move.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy one point seven oh one, School District Planning. Again, uh, it's an update for incorporating the TESA Accountability Report and Alignment into our district planning. I've already taken action on this once with the November report. This puts it into policy.
So, move. Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Uh, Policy two point six oh one, Fundraising Activities. And just as a reminder, we, we tabled this and took it on no action. As we are waiting for the new policy to be rees- released, this is information that was given to us by our Legislative Liaison.
Yeah, if, if they choose to act on it at the state, if not, we can deal with that, make the changes in, but there may be some funding changes coming down the pike.
Thank you. Uh, Policy two point eight oh five, Purchasing. As a reminder, anything over five thousand must be approved by the Board. We previously had twenty-five thousand in that. Is that correct? And then, and it's changed, and, and we have to reflect that change, so. Any purchases of five thousand dollars within our schools are, we, we need to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discuss- any discussion or questions? Or disquestions? Save words.
Say, just lean into the microphone and say that.
New word, y'all. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy two point eight oh six, Bids and Quotations. As a reminder, anything over fifteen thousand but under fifty needs three quotes, and anything over fifty thousand must be publicly bid, and this matches our, our county financial policy as well. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policies for Second Reading, five point one oh one, Organizational Chart. We yearly have to do this. We reset the hierarchy or fill in any blanks or new hires or who's been handed a task. We discussed this at the November work session, December one reading. This is the second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Uh, this would be where we would have public comment. There is none, no one signed up for it. Also, we will move to announcements. Again, School and Budget Committees, ten AM tomorrow morning at the Annex. Full County Court Meeting at nine AM on Tuesday. Our work session will be next Thursday. Then the Board Meeting, February first. Work Session, February fifteenth. Any other dates or anything left off? Get on that. Our agenda does not have comments on it, which I feel like, feel like you're happy about that.
Yep.
See, might wanna make an objection to that?
We're not making a motion either. Put them on there.
We don't break rules. We don't break rules, sir, on the agenda.
I'm gonna go with this, cause I'm gonna tell you why. Cause my very first board meeting, very first one, they came to me and I was like, I don't have any comment. And everybody looked at me like, are you sure? And I was like, yeah. And they're like, no, are you sure? Like, you have to make a comment. And I wasn't expecting that, and so I made up some comment, cause I was deer in headlights. Sure thing, sure thing. Alright.
Uh, I would like to, you know, we lost Mr. Watson to retirement December thirty-first. Mr. Chuck Eddy is here with us tonight, and he is assuming that role as our Maintenance Supervisor, and he has had a good break-in to, to that role. So, we appreciate him being here tonight and for taking on that responsibility.
Thank you, thank you.
I feel like there's a good story behind that.
He said, he said, let me get through next week.
And I'm serious, so we appreciate everything that you guys do, even with all these things with Bridgeforth coming up. We wouldn't have been able to get this far along down the road without a fantastic maintenance group, and we really sincerely appreciate that.
You've been here twenty-five, thirty years, Chuck.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
But he's not retiring, is he?
No, no.
We bribe Angie. We bribe Angie.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. St. Thanks for stepping in. I appreciate you. That's comforting.
I'm not sure that's the word I'd use.
Shots fired.
Heck yeah. Heck yeah. One behind him is in one of my.
Sounds like you was riffraff. You's leading the riffraff.
You're talking about Mr. Hunter? Oh, you said behind him, was it? I thought you said beside.
Thank you, thank you.
Showing you age.
Just look at him, he's got great hair, is my guy.
There's a lot of stories to it. I second.
There's a motion and a second to the jury?
I'm with you.
All those in favor?